Okay, good morning, everyone. We'll call the commission meeting to order. First item of business is the discussion of Dave's desire to take part in Para's phased retirement plan. The executive committee of the board and the commission have met numerous times, reviewed all of this. It is our recommendation that we elevate our assistant executive director Shannon to the executive director position, and then also create a position for Dave so he can flow into his part-time position, and we can continue to benefit from his knowledge, skills, and longevity with the organization. So I assume that everyone has read the memo that Dave put together. So our purpose today is to accept the recommendation of the executive committees, but I'll open it up for discussion from our commission members. Bill, you look like you're pondering something serious.
I am pondering, so maybe you could tell the group, I guess everybody probably read everything, like what are the financial implications of that? There's a part of the memo that talks about a hundred, little over $100,000, and another part of the memo that talks about a little over $46,000. So maybe...
Well, there is a cost savings, anticipated to be about $100,000 with the reduction in Dave's position. He'll be going from 40 hours to 30, and then to 20, and settle in on 20. So I think that what we looked at was roughly $100,000 savings. Might be a little bit more than that because my position is, you know, when we, when we work out an employment contract with Shannon, that we may, you know, have some savings there. So, Bill, do you want to elaborate on that?
Well, there was another part of the memo that talked about once we added Dave's, I mean, maybe Dave probably wrote the memo, so he's probably better able to talk about it, that once we added your part-time salary back in, it's like $46,000.
Right.
That is correct.
And that's not just from this, it's from a combination of different things that we're doing.
That is correct. A number of open positions that we've had that we are looking to rehire, and some of those will be at a lower rate because we've had a lot of long-term people and a few that have retired or moved on to other jobs. And so with that reassigning, we are able to make some savings that will help us here as we make this transition.
Further questions?
Assuming that the new people stay, that may go away mid-long term.
I suppose, long-term, there certainly is that possibility, yes.
So it's a...
Cindy will be retiring in March, and so, you know, the new person taking her spot would not be at her salary, so there'd be some savings there. But, you know, long-term, that certainly is a possibility.
I have a question, Jim. Will Shannon be continuing the news director position, or will you eventually be hiring for that position?
Eventually be hiring someone to fill that spot, yes. She wouldn't be able to handle both duties, so that would be the plan, yes. Other questions? Jim?
These savings that are shown here are annualized basis, so it's not a question of what's going to happen to the current budget year.
Right.
And do we have any projections of what the status of our budget is going forward for the balance of the fiscal year, not our calendar year? Because of, we've had the payouts of people, those, I guess, all occurred before this year.
Correct.
We've had additional ABDO expenses this year. I'm just concerned, too, that I don't have any problem with the accuracy of the data here, et cetera. It's for 12 months, and we, we really are, at least I'm looking at it on an annual basis, the current budget. So I, at some point, it'd be interesting to know what that, the status of the budget might be with respect to these proposed savings.
Any other question is, ABDO, you know, how much, how much are we going to use though, that organization to help us? So that's, that's a question mark. Dave, you want to address that?
That is something that Jim and I have talked about, and certainly information that we are looking to get from ABDO, and they are in the process of developing a plan of what their exit strategy would be as we bring on people that would be in the office administrative positions, that would be taking some of the duties that ABDO is working for us right now due to the departure last year. So that is a process, and certainly something I think that with the executive committees, we can get together and look at that further in upcoming meetings and maybe some special meetings.
Mr. Chair, as people are mentioning the financials, I think there's a couple of us that didn't get those in our packet. Is there a place where we should have been looking for those?
That was a request of the executive committee, so that information went to the executive committee.
All right, thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, could, is there something we could pass around right now to the rest of the members of the commission that did not get that part of the memo?
I'll connect here so we can take a handful of copies of that certainly.
Okay. While Dave's making copies, we'll continue the discussion. Personally, I have no doubt in my mind that Shannon is highly qualified. When we moved Dave to the executive director position, we then moved Shannon to the assistant executive director position, based on the fact that we felt that she was highly qualified. Her moving into the executive director spot is sooner than what we anticipated, but in my mind, that has not diminished her capabilities. She's been with us about 15 years. I think she's done an outstanding job for us. She's interested in the position, she's excited, she's in the process of putting together goals and objectives, which will be reviewed. So I think she's highly qualified to continue the success of this operation, so... Dave, you want to add anything? Or Mike?
She's so highly qualified, she's going to make the copies for you right now. She heard us in the control room and jumped to action.
Well, I will comment on Shannon. As the executive committee process unfolded, they, they looked into Shannon's qualifications. Obviously, she's been here for a long time. She's an Emmy award-winning producer, so she's a very talented production person, but then her education, that frankly, I didn't know about. But she, she graduated top of her class from a small school in Arkansas, and then graduated with a master's degree from Princeton. And, you know, when, I, I worked with cable commissions here in Minnesota and cities across the country, and frankly, when I looked at her, her skills and education, it's, it's hard to match that anywhere. So I think you're getting a very qualified person in Shannon.
Yeah, the executive committees, but we've met numerous times to review all of this. We also interviewed Shannon, and I think the executive committee came through that with the position that she is highly qualified, and she would do a fine job for us as executive director. In Dave's memo, toward the bottom, is the recommendation that, is the recommendation that the executive committees, board, and commission are proposing, and that'd be to move Shannon to the position of executive director, and then reassign Dave from the position of executive director to the eventual part-time position of government and community affairs liaison. I think that's in our long-term best interest because I think everybody in this room agrees that Dave has got tremendous skills, and it would be, it would be good to put those to a greater use. And elevate Shannon from the position of assistant executive director to executive director, direct the commission's attorney to terminate the executive director employment agreement with Dave, and direct the commission's attorney to draft an executive director employment agreement with Shannon. So that's the recommendation of the executive committee of the commission and the board. Any further discussion on that?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to also point out in addition to Al's comments that it was unanimous recommendation by all members.
Of both boards.
Both boards, yeah.
So, Mr. Chair, another thing is that we, we found that Shannon has the ability to think on her feet, and she's managed a group of employees that consists of the news department, and maybe since she does think on her feet so well, maybe she could come out right now and tell us about her news department experience, and it is impressive, and it does qualify.
There she is, yes. Shannon, the floor is yours.
I know you'll thank me for this later, Shannon.
All right, I knew I wanted to get to a microphone for our technical crew in the back so they're not chasing me around the room. But of course, during the last years managing the news department, it's been a super crazy time with the pandemic. We went remote really quickly with really not a lot of setup to go remote. We hadn't been remote in the past, and so we transitioned to become basically a digital newspaper until we could get our video legs back under us, and we were able to get news out on the air. And what we saw is some of the biggest numbers that we've ever seen on our website because people really wanted to find out what was going on in their local communities. So it was really important to me to get people working, get people working quickly. I also, during my time as news director, realized that maybe doing a 20-minute show wasn't the best use of our resources, and so we transitioned that to a six-minute and 45-second segment that we've done per day, every day. That way, we can drop new content on the channel every day, even when we're not working, and we can put new content on the website every day. So what we saw before, previously, was our web traffic would tank out over the weekend, and then being able to change how we did things, we were able to have consistent web traffic, which was important. So those are two big things that, that we've changed in the news department in my time there. I'm looking forward to serving the commission. I'm very proud of CCX Media and what we do in the community. I'm proud of the people who work here. We have good people who work here who are very committed to what we do, and so that's what I have.
So could you talk a little bit about the number of people on the staff that you've managed also?
Yes, we've had a news team of about 10. It hasn't fluctuated too much until recently. We just have kind of one position that's been harder to fill. And then when I went to assistant executive director, I managed the sports department, too, which truthfully didn't need a lot of handling. We've got some folks that have been there for a while, so it was just really doing what I could to set them up for success. And then the connection department, which works with many of you in your cities to produce city-directed content, and just making sure we're doing what we need to do in that department as well.
Any other questions for Shannon? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the commission members?
Mr. Chair?
You have the recommendation at the bottom of Dave's memo. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
I just have a question about the organizational structure with this and who will be handling with Dave transitioning. What is the plan for the assistant director, executive director position then?
Well, that would be up to Shannon. You know, we, we'd be, the executive committee would be working with her to find a new executive director, assistant executive director, whether it's someone from within or outside. Right now, we don't know.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I'd like to have somebody make a motion to accept what the executive, excuse me, the executive committees have proposed at the bottom of Dave's memo, which is what I read earlier.
So I move the recommended change in structure and hiring Shannon?
Second. A motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed, it is done. So, Mr. Bradley, you will work on an employment contract, I will, thank you, and I'll come back to the executive committee, so... Okay, very good. The second item is, Mr. Bradley, the legal and telecommunications update and discussion of, well, after that, the bylaws.
Yes, thank you, Chair and members. Wanted to bring you up to date on a few things since we filed our legal report with you, which is in your packet. Wanted to go over, if we could go to the next slide, please. We filed on behalf of the commission and several other cities across the country, comments to the FCC on digital discrimination and equal access to broadband. And this was an important proceeding to comment on because it gives us an opportunity to, to let the FCC know just how successful local franchising has been, particularly as it relates to cable television. And when you look at the different communications companies that are, and technologies that are out there, when it comes to making sure that a system has been built out throughout an entire city, providing universal pricing and universal services, cable franchising is really the only method of regulation that has worked to make that happen. And so this was an opportunity to express that to the FCC and to others. It was also an opportunity to encourage the FCC to revoke rules that are ineffective in ensuring equal access to broadband services. So we gave some examples with the 621 proceeding that this commission participated in through the appeal in the Sixth Circuit. So we encouraged the FCC to revoke the, what's called the mixed-use rule, relating to regulation on cable services over a cable system, the in-kind compensation rules, which is related to the calculation of franchise fees, and the small cell rules, which largely preempt local governments from regulating the deployment of small cells. Then we gave a number of comments on what digital discrimination rules should look like by the FCC. So, for example, we thought the rules should be impact-based rather than intent-based. We should have quality-of-service standards that essentially should be going at the highest level of quality of service across an entire footprint rather than anything else, like the lowest possible quality of service. And we shouldn't allow exceptions to the rules to become large loopholes that don't allow that equal access to occur in, in communities. And then finally, there was a committee that was put together by the FCC on coming up with best practices for local governments, and we suggested that the FCC adopt those best practices. And those best practices largely supported exactly what we were saying, is that local franchising is, is very good. So those comments were filed on February 21st, and there was a lot of commenters, and we'll be submitting reply comments here next Tuesday in that same docket. Can we go to the next slide, please? One of the things that came to our attention at the very, boy, I think it was the very end of February, was that the state of Minnesota is doing a digital, a digital equity plan. And part of that, they're seeking comments from your communities. And, and the federal government had provided a certain amount of money to each state to help provide the planning for these digital equity plans. And, and so we learned about these $4,000 mini-grants, up to $4,000 mini-grants, that the state was giving for, for local governments to participate in this process by forming a digital connection committee. And so, once we learned about that, we connected with our clients here in the Twin Cities, and, including this commission, and we quickly put together an application, submitted it, and we got the, the mini-grant. So I'm happy to say that this commission was awarded full funding, as did a number other, of other cable commissions and cities throughout the Twin Cities metro area. Again, it's a, it's a really good way, I think it kind of dovetails nicely into those digital discrimination comments, and letting not only the federal government know through the FCC that local franchising is important, but also letting the state of Minnesota know that, and that there's a role for organizations like this organization in, in making sure that, that any digital equity and inclusion efforts are successful. And so we'll be moving forward on the digital connection committee work here in the next month or so, and we'll just be letting the commission know as we go along as what we're, what we need to do. Okay, we can go to the next slide? One of the other things that I frankly just really learned about was that there's, there's also federal funding for line extensions to making sure that, that people that aren't getting adequate broadband service can get it. And it's, it's a pretty simple process, so that if you have any residents in your cities that think that they're not getting adequate broadband service, they can call this phone number that I highlighted on the slide, or go to the website that, that we have there through DEED. And we can provide these if you just, you know, ping Dave or ping me, we're happy to give you that information, and there's a nice handout on, online extension process through DEED. But you put your address in there, and then the Office of Broadband Development will basically put that project out to bid, and then award up to $25,000 to the carrier that's willing to bring broadband out to that home. And I can tell you, it has worked in, in other commission areas where there's just, you know, kind of a more remote area of that jurisdiction that could never get service, and they got service. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. We go to the next slide, then. Legislation, I kind of mentioned that in the legal report, but it is going to be continuing to be important to review state legislation relating to streaming video services, and then also keeping an eye on, you know, what's happening with our franchise fee and PEG fee revenues moving forward, and the impact streaming is having on those revenues. So Massachusetts and New York have both introduced legislation that would impose a tax or fee on streaming services to, to support local access organizations like this, like this type of an organization. On the federal level, the Protecting Community Television Act has been reintroduced. The two Minnesota senators have already signed on to it, and it would roll back that in-kind rule that we talked about in our first slide, that would, the in-kind rule that the FCC passed to reduce franchise fees. It would roll back that rule, so we're keeping our eye on that as well. MACTA is an organization, it's a state chapter of Natoa, and, and they represent local government interests on telecommunications issues, and they're having their day at the Capitol on April 13th. So if anybody wants to participate in that, I'm guessing Dave and Shannon will likely participate in that on behalf of the commission. But we'll start at the League of Minnesota Cities in the morning, and then folks are encouraged to go out and talk to their state representatives and senators later in the afternoon. And we go to the next slide. Franchise renewal is continuing on. We've obviously had a lot of things going on in the background here at the commission, but that hasn't distracted us from continuing on with franchise renewal. So we're, we've continued to meet with, you know, different cities, and we'll continue to do that, and then put together our kind of informal assessment of what our needs and interests and priorities are for renewal. We'll be working through the executive committees on those things and with this body at some point. And then we're expected to get that work done sometime around June of 2023, and then start meeting with Comcast in earnest on renewal in the summer fall of 2023. Okay, next slide? We've talked a lot about the fifth commissioner for the FCC, and she ended up, in our report, we talked about the hearing on February 14th, but shortly after the report was issued, she withdrew her name. So we're gonna, we're gonna have a divided FCC at 2-2 for the foreseeable future. There has not been a new nominee since she announced her withdrawal. And then finally, the last slide is just some firm news on me. I was asked to participate in a, in a webcast through cable cast. It's going to be shown at the NAB show in Las Vegas. It's a streaming event. I'll be available for live Q and A, should be on, on April 17th. So get your, get your spots reserved now for that very important streaming event. And that's my report, and we can go into the bylaws next.
Any questions of Dave or the legislative update? I mean, Dave, Mike, Bill?
So this $25,000 line extension grant that's available, could that happen in multiple areas of our franchise area, like this one area is $25,000, and then there's another one over here in Maple Grove and Plymouth, et cetera?
Mm-hmm, yeah, it could happen, yeah, in pockets of any one of your member cities.
Okay.
Yeah, it's worth knowing. So, you know, if your staff receives calls that, you know, that we're not getting adequate broadband service, you know, then we can give them this information, put your address in through this phone number or this webpage, and, you know, you might get served. It's, the program is being used, for sure, you know? Yeah, it's a reverse auction. I didn't really go into the nitty-gritty of it, but it's, it's been popular with the
Okay, bylaw is something we haven't updated for quite some time.
So Chair and members, in your packet is a, a set of by, a set of draft bylaws. And what you should know is that if this was a true red line, the entire thing would be redlined because it's, it's all completely brand-new. The bylaws haven't been updated since, I believe, 1995. So it's a new set of bylaws. What we did is we based them off of model bylaws suggested by the League of Minnesota Cities, but then also amended so that they work with cable commissions, and, and they particularly work with your joint powers agreement. So, so anyway, we completely redid the bylaws. The red line that you do see in the bylaws are the, the red line changes made by the executive committees. They, the executive committees met, I believe, twice and took up the, the bylaws at, so at two of those meetings. And, and so those changes are shown in your, in the draft, in the packet. Yeah, the old bylaws just, they were so out of date, I, I initially thought, well, we'll just we'll just try to work with them. And I was like, it's just not going to make any sense to work with them, so. So anyway, we, those are before you today for your, for your review. And I don't think we're taking action today. We wanted to-
No, take action at the next commission meeting in May.
Yeah, so there's existing there's an existing provision for amending bylaws in the current bylaws that require the commission to see the by, the commission members to see the proposal at least 15 days before the meeting. And we thought, well, since we're having a special meeting, we'll just we'll use this opportunity and we'll give you way more than 15 days. So, you know, in your review, if you do see anything you think we should consider amending, you know, we're happy to bring that forward at the next cable commission meeting. But the idea, I think, you know, unless we hear otherwise from you, is to bring them forward at the next meeting.
Anybody have any comments or questions? For those that have had sleepless nights, you've probably read these from front to back, so.
I hope so, I mean, come on.
Chair, I have one question and it was just mainly from a fellow executive committee members. When we had talked about term limits, I know we went back and forth. And I could not remember if we, so it's written as though we have no term limits. I sort of recall that we had decided to have term limits. And I don't know if anyone else in the room recalls that.
I think we thought that, that term limits are called elections.
Yeah, I think that's where we ended up, essentially that.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I believe, yeah.
So, yeah, you missed that meeting and we used that opportunity to undo what you're suggesting.
But I get for getting COVID, I guess.
No, but there were good arguments on both sides.
No, that's fine. That, I'm fine either way. Just wanted to-
You were remembering it just like me, but I, that second meeting, I wasn't at, so.
Any comments or questions that someone may have?
Well, I want to thank the attorney for his efforts because it's, he said it's correct. They're long overdue and he's done a good job, I think, of putting everything together for our consideration.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, I was kind when I said they hadn't been updated for a few years. 1995, yeah.
Seems like yesterday.
Yeah. Well, continue to review the bylaws. This, these will come to the May 18th commission meeting, so. Anything else, Dave? Or Mike?
Nothing else from me, other than just thank you to the executive committee and to the entire commission for your support. Appreciate that.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? If they're not, ask for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.